Good evening. I call to order the regularly scheduled meeting for the York County School Board for Monday, January the 23rd. Good evening, everyone. We are so happy that you're here with us this evening and those at home looking at TV. You can probably tell that we have changed chairs around here. So it's my honor to serve as Chair of this Board for the next year and Mr. Medford will be the Vice Chair. I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. George for his tremendous service over the years. Usually we do this in a two-year increment, but he has some other obligations with business and family that we are still, we're still going to keep him close in. He may not sit here, but he still has a lot to do with us. Mr. Richardson is out of town on vacation. This was a planned trip, so you will have the four of us here tonight. And as we move into our meeting, I ask if Angelie Cologne come forward to do our pledge. Let me tell you a little bit about Angelie. She's an 11th grade, is an 11 grade year old, fifth grader student at Bethel Manor.
Eleven year old.
What?
Eleven year old.
Eleven year old, fifth grade.
Sorry.
I thought she said 11th grader. I'm thinking five.
No, 11 year old, fifth grade. See, we're starting the year off fine. Her wisdom, intelligence, and integrity guides her decision-making skills and her enthusiastic personality. She is always willing to help others and to be a friend to all students. Angelie is the President of the Student Council Association, a member of chorus and page turners. She's also on the Gators basketball team and a member of the book club at Bethel Manor Elementary. On an average day, one could find Angelie smiling and spreading joy to all she meets. Please stand and join her in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and we're going to save your 11th grade year to come back. It is our honor now to move into the seniors of the month, and I have the honor of introducing to you the January Senior of the Month from Bruton High School, Elijah Graves. And Elijah, would you stand? And who is, and who else is with you tonight? Please stand. Everybody else, you stand, and everybody else with you, stand. Fantastic. And let me share some information with you about Elijah. Bruton High School is proud to honor Elijah Graves as the Senior of the Month for January. Elijah is an affable, caring, and quiet leader who has a tremendous impact on his peers. Elijah is diligent in every endeavor, no matter the task, whether he is presenting his artwork, helping a ninth grade student through Panther Achievement mentoring, or working his part-time job at Movie Tavern in Williamsburg. Moreover, Elijah models sound leadership as a student athlete and a scholar. During the past four years, Elijah has participated on the football, wrestling, and track teams. This includes helping the Bruton Wrestling Team win a district title. As much as Elijah enjoys athletic competitions, he also enjoys math and science. This passion has prompted Elijah to pursue advanced robotics, electronics, and fiber optics at the New Horizons Educational Center. He is working forward to receiving an acceptance to Virginia Tech where he plans to major in electronics engineering. Elijah has reached super academic standing as he has earned highest honors in grades nine, 10, and 11th, and he continues to be a top scholar in his class and currently maintains a 3.94 grade point average. Elijah has been recognized by the faculty of Bruton High School for his outstanding academic achievement as a member of the National Honor Society and Mu Alpha Theta. We are all proud of all the accomplishments that Elijah has attained, and we look forward to his continued success. Please join me in recognizing Elijah. I want to also recognize the December Student of the Month from Bruton High School, Xavier Katasas. Could not be with us in December. Is Xavier here this evening? Okay. I'm not going to read this again because I've read it for December. And we now move to Grafton High. Mrs. Kirsty.
Yes, it is my honor to announce that the Student of the Month for January from Grafton High School is Tavoris Noel. Would you please stand along with your parents? Anyone else here with you that could stand? Tavoris is a star athlete who has also consistently distinguished himself academically during his four years at Grafton. Tavoris is a member of the National Honor Society, Math Honor Society, Model United Nations, and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He has earned highest academic honors each year at Grafton. As an award-winning athlete, four years as a defensive back on the Grafton Football Squad, Tavoris received the esteemed Iron Clipper Award, which recognizes the athlete who typifies academic excellence, fair play, and character in sport. Tavoris also earned First Team All-Conference and Second Team All-Region honors for his excellent play. In track and field, Tavoris earned All-State honors in the high jump for both indoor and outdoor track. In the community, Tavoris works with a local organization to feed the homeless, volunteers at the Hampton Community Center, and is a member of the Coventry Clean Team and ushers at his church. Tavoris is an outstanding student and an asset to Grafton High School. His quiet, yet affirming personality will be missed next year as he plans to attend Princeton University in the fall on an athletic scholarship. We know he will continue to make Grafton proud. Please join me in congratulating Tavoris Noel.
Dr. George, you have TAB High.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Haywood. I'm pleased to announce the Senior of the Month from TAB High School is Rachel Ray. Rachel, are you here? There you are. And any family members, please stand. Great. Rachel is an active and talented leader in the award-winning TAB Tiger Band program, including being in both symphonic and stage band this year. She was selected as the brass captain and the trumpet section leader for the marching band for both her junior and senior years. As a junior, Rachel was the entertainment editor for the Tiger Times, TAB High's newspaper. For her academic achievements, she has been inducted into five honor societies, including Science, Mu Alpha Theta, Beta Club, and the National Honor Society. In addition, Rachel has been selected for and was instrumental in founding the first TAB chapter of Triumph Music Honor Society, where she is currently the Vice President. Rachel has been active for the last two years as an anchor for Tiger TV, TAB's school broadcast club. In her free time, she is a four-year member of the forensics team, where she is the captain and is placed in the regional competition for three years and at the state competition for two. Rachel was selected by the TAB High faculty to participate in the Virginia Girls State Program during the summer of 2016. These activities and many others have led Rachel to plan to major in Broadcast Communication this fall at Berry College in Georgia. While TAB High will miss her presence, Rachel will surely be an asset to Berry as she transitions from being a tiger to an eagle. Congratulations, you make us proud.
And Mr. Medford, you have York High.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. It's my pleasure to introduce the Senior of the Month for York High School for January, Megan Gingeri. Are you here? Megan, there she is. I'll be, mom and dad's with you. Perfect. York High School is pleased to announce the selection of Megan as the January Senior of the Month. Three words that would describe Megan are motivated, kind, and genuine. Megan is passionate about her academics and puts a tremendous amount of thought into classes she selects each year. Megan has maintained a 4.12 grade point average throughout high school, and she has taken a challenging course load each year. Megan is part of the honors program, which is one of the most rigorous programs in the York County School Division. In addition to being in the honors program, Megan is a member of the National Honor Society, the National Spanish Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta. Megan is a wonderful student and takes pride in being a student athlete. Megan is the captain of the indoor and outdoor track teams and was honored that she was selected as team captain because she views her role as a person who would encourage other students and serve as a role model to the team. Megan is also a talented singer. She auditioned and was accepted into the all-district choir or chorus. Megan volunteers with her mom and her local elementary school, and she assists the ESL students in learning English. Megan also volunteers with the Red Cross Club and with the Read Across America at Seaford Elementary School. Megan is well-respected by her peers, and she was voted Homecoming Queen for 2016. York High is proud of Megan and her accomplishments. We are, we all are. Congratulations. Thank you.
We move now to our Student Service Award recipients. Dr. Shandor, you're going to go down front. And if Bethel, Dr. George, you have Bethel Manor Elementary.
I do, thank you. From Bethel Manor Elementary, we have Heidi Otten and Principal Dr. David Wrights. Bethel Manor Elementary School has the honor of selecting Ms. Heidi Otten as our 2016, 2017 Student Service Award winner. As a compassionate and responsible fifth grader, Heidi has displayed numerous character traits that set her above her peers. Her time as a Girl Scout with Troop 1097 has taught her leadership skills that she displays in the classroom. Her acceptance of diversity is also evident with her peer relationships. Heidi is also an active archer with the Wilcox Junior Olympic Archery Development. Her involvement with this sport has taught her the importance of risk-taking and conquering challenges. Heidi is not afraid to tackle difficult mathematical tasks and approaches her lessons from a variety of strategies. Ms. Otten is also a current usher at her church on Langley Air Force Housing. Her friendly face is noticeable to peers and faculty during their time there. Due to her many extracurricular involvements in the community, it is our honor to have Heidi Otten represent Bethel Manor Elementary and its fifth grade population. Congratulations, Heidi. Thank you.
Mr. Medford, you have York River Academy.
I do. It's always an exciting moment when I can bring Mr. Cross and a student up here from York River Academy. So if I can get Mr. Cross, the principal, and Timothy Tidwell to come on up, please. Timothy is the overwhelming choice for this year's Student Service Award for York River Academy. Tim is a junior at YRA, and has so far, teachers have only had to resort to one letter of the alphabet for his grades, for he has a perfect A average in high school. Tim has demonstrated extraordinary proficiency in the area of technology and applications. He has earned 12 industry certifications or credentials to this point. He has passed every Microsoft examination that we offer, including the expert level in Word, as well as several Adobe Suite exams and a business management certification exam. Tim was also able to apply the information that he has mastered in classes and the community. Tim has been an active member of the Key Club every year at YRA, also serving on the teams that go to elementary schools in the spring to set up computer labs for SOL testing. In fact, Tim will be leading one of those teams this spring. He will be one of the first students trained to pilot the Phantom 4 drone that we will be able to purchase and has shown himself to be responsible and motivated to do the planning necessary to meet the demands of this new venture. The greenhouse project at YRA combines the science and business necessary to produce and market products, a true real-world experience. Tim has been involved in this project literally from the ground up. He was one of the students who came out this summer in the heat and humidity to put together the greenhouse from a kit. He has also been actively involved in the research and planning for what materials, resources, and care are needed to take the project from concept to reality. Tim is a team leader and is one of the reasons that the teachers involved in this project are increasingly in the role of facilitator as the students take more responsibility. Tim is the treasurer and thus responsible for the financial aspects of this project. In fact, order forms for products are now available. We'll figure out where those order forms are, even possibly a farmer's market in Yorktown. Tim's involvement in service extends into the community. He is a consumed entrepreneur at the American, no, I'm sorry, costumed interpreter, boy messed that one up, don't have my glasses on, at the American Revolutionary Museum of Yorktown and is, and serves as YRA's first member of the York County Youth Commission. He is the public relations chairman for the Youth Commission and is credited for exceptional organizational skills and being completely dependable. Tim has a dynamic, has had a dynamic impact on YRA as well as the larger community. He is dependable and responsible and willing to help out adults and students alike. Tim is described as having a charming personality with a sense of self that makes it easy to get the knowing. Not only is Tim very successful, but he is one of the main reasons why we at YRA are successful. Tim is a remarkable and valued member of the community, and we commend him as our Student Service Award recipient. Tim, fabulous job. Congratulations.
We move now to the Community Volunteers of the Month, and Mrs. Kirsty, you have Bethel Manor.
Yes, it is my pleasure to announce that Stephanie Federchinko, Federchinko, did I say that right? Is she here today? Would you please come forward along with Bethel Manor Elementary School Principal, Volunteers are worth their weight in gold. They share their time and talents without any compensation, so it's crucial to acknowledge their contributions and let them know they are valued. Thanking them can go a long way toward accomplishing this goal, so it's worth taking the time to find just the right words to show your appreciation. The main role of the PTA is to build strong working relationships among parents, teachers, and schools in support of students. This can include recruiting and coordinating volunteers, providing special recognition in award ceremonies, or through other activities, organizing parent education events, planning teacher appreciation activities, and much more. Stephanie, Bethel Manor's PTA president, does all of the aforementioned duties and much more for the Bethel Manor School community. Stephanie has given over 700 hours this year to volunteering at Bethel Manor. Beyond the time she spends at Bethel Manor, Stephanie is a military wife and mother of five boys. Additionally, she has volunteered over 200 hours serving as key spouse for the U.S. Air Force. Stephanie is committed to the welfare of children and strives to obtain a better relationship between the home and school and is committed to the purposes of the PTA. The Bethel Manor staff and administration want to thank her for caring for, believing in, and inspiring our students and their families year-round. You truly are building our children's tomorrow in today's PTA. Congratulations.
And I have the honor of presenting to you the volunteer from York River Academy, Angela Tidwell. If she will come forward with Principal again, Walt Cross. It is an honor to present to you Angela Tidwell, the Volunteer of the Year for York River Academy. Mrs. Tidwell has been actively involved with YRA for the past three years, and we can look forward to another three years beyond this year with her second son participating in the program. Mrs. Tidwell has done as much as anyone can see, as anyone, to see our greenhouse project go from idea to reality. She spent an entire day during the summer going through the steps and to work to get the greenhouse from packing cases to reality. Not only did she work diligently, but she also was one of the few who could actually make sense out of the 160 pages of instructions. She was a wonderful cheerleader, particularly as the temperature rose and motivation waned, encouraging through words and example. We would have been hard-pressed to walk away with the structure without her presence and work. Mrs. Tidwell, along with her family, have been wonderfully supportive of York River Academy, participating in the program and parent partnership activities. She is one of our parent representatives who will be participating in the parent forums to solicit input and feedback in the development of the division's long-term strategic plan. Mrs. Tidwell is the parent representative on the York River Academy Governing Board, who is, that is responsible for providing input into the school as well as serving as community liaison for programming. Mrs. Tidwell provides the type of real-world input that is crucial to accomplishing the mission of York River Academy. Mrs. Tidwell works at TAB Middle School and has served as liaison with York County Parks and Recreation, highlighting opportunities for students to participate in their wider community. Mrs. Tidwell is low-key and brings a can-do attitude to those things she puts her hand to, and has certainly helped to transfer that attitude to her sons. We are blessed to have the entire Tidwell family as a part of York River Academy, as is the larger York County community. Thanks to you, Angela Tidwell, for your heart of service and obvious care you bring to out to many. Please join me in congratulating Angela Tidwell. Next on our agenda is a York River, York Foundation for Public Education presentation. Mrs. Kirsty.
Yes, and Mrs. Haywood, speaking of hard-working volunteers, I would like to invite volunteer extraordinaire Kathy Young and York Foundation for Public Education Board Member Kathy Young to come forward for tonight's presentation, along with our students. Angela, from Bethel Manor, would you come forward? Tonight's pledge leader. Also, our Student Service Award winners, Heidi and Timothy, would you two come forward? And our seniors of the month, Elijah, Tavoris, Rachel, and Megan, if you would all come We'd like to congratulate Angela, a fifth grader at Bethel Manor. She did a remarkable job leading the pledge of allegiance tonight. And we are so impressed with our Student Service Award recipients, Heidi from Bethel Manor and Timothy from York River Academy. And finally, what an incredible group of high school students that York County is so proud of. Elijah from Bruton, Tavoris from Grafton, Rachel from TAB, and Megan from York. We congratulate you all on your successes and would like to present you with a cookie from Cookie Text, an edible tweet, along with a gift certificate from Walmart. On behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education and its donor, Jeanne Fioka of Cookie Text, an edible tweet, we congratulate you. You make us so very proud.
We have two more presentations before we have a recess to meet our award winners. And as we move into, first presentation is accent on academics, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. As part of our K-5 literacy model, all of our elementary schools in York County launched Writer's Workshop in September. This evening, students and staff of Coventry Elementary School will share the Writer's Workshop process from generating ideas to final publishing. They will also share a new club that is started as a result of implementing Writer's Workshop at the school. Mrs. Paul Assassin, principal, will now introduce tonight's presenters. Ms. Assassin.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and good evening, Mrs. Haywood and members of the board, parents, students, and fellow educators. The intent of writing instruction is that students will understand that writing is used for a variety of purposes, including sharing events and telling stories, informing others and making reports, labeling and making lists, persuading others with specific examples and reasons, and responding to literature. Writing is not merely a finished product. It is a process, including pre-writing, drafting, revising, editing, and publishing. It is our goal as educators to ensure that our students are proficient in all steps of the writing process. And this evening, Ms. McNulty and several of her students are going to share with you how this all works. Ms. McNulty is one of our instructional trainers at Coventry Elementary School and is a role model in the area of writing for other teachers. She provides support and coaching to others, as all of our teachers have begun implementing Writer's Workshop in their classrooms this school year. Ms. McNulty has also attended the Eastern Virginia Writing Conference at William &amp; Mary. Additionally, she has presented on peer editing and writing feedback to the Newport News Reading Council and the York County School Division. Let me present to you Ms. McNulty and several of our Coventry Elementary students. First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing our students to share with you their Writer's Workshop and their writing process experiences. I am very proud of what York County has given our students in this new literacy model. The experiences our students are gaining from writing about what is important to them and what they know about is creating incredible connections to their reading. The ownership we're giving our students in their daily writing will create higher-level thinkers and truly set the foundations for global citizens ready to participate thoughtfully in their community. Before I introduce my first friend, I do want you to know that the words they say are their own words. They have an amazing understanding of what the writing process is. So my first friend is Evan Shipman. Okay, Evan, can you please tell our friends about how we start the writing process? In particular, what is a jot list?
It's a list that has ideas that you can use, and it's, you can, you hold, you can use your, for your next writing, ideas you can choose from to write about.
So wow, you mean you get to choose what you want to write about? Well, what kinds of things do you put on your jot list?
You can put stuff that you are good at, or stuff that you are new at, or you could write about something, anything, something that is interesting. You could even put someone's name on your jot list, like from history.
So you've got a jot list in your folder. Now how do you pick what to do your pre-write or your newest draft on?
Usually I find the most interesting one on my list. Right now, I am writing how to find a good hiding spot while playing hide and seek. We're writing information, I'll explain in toy papers now.
Thank you, Evan. Okay, so students get to choose their writing, but the writing they choose occurs in the genre that we're teaching. Like Evan said, he's doing an explanatory and an informational piece, but it's about finding a good hiding spot when you play hide and seek. This connection to their writing allows teachers to better understand the student's thought process and the student's understanding of our instructional objectives. With traditional writing prompts, student writing may suffer from their lack of understanding or their engagement in the writing. Freedom of choice gives teachers the better ability to see when our students get it and where they are challenged. where they are challenged. Thank you, Evan. All right, next, I would like to introduce you to Camden Fowler. Camden, tell me, what happens after you finish your draft?
You rainbow edit. We box letters that should be capitalized in green. We circle punctuation in red, and we put words we think are misspelled in yellow highlighter, because it's a flashlight to put on words, so we remember to go back to it and try to find the right way to spell it.
So wait a minute, you're telling me you take responsibility to read your paper and look for mistakes before me?
Yes, it's also to make sure it makes sense.
Okay, so then what happens next in the writing process?
After you rainbow edit, you go to a peer editor. A peer editor reads the paper and checks spelling, capitalization, and punctuation. So now two people have read the paper.
Camden is a member of our peer editing team. This team of six students gives the author the chance to hear someone else read their work before they meet with me for revision. By having students work together, it also gives me the chance to meet with each of our authors one-on-one, to give them that differentiated instruction they need to become better writers. Camden, what's next in the writing process?
We publish. This is when you do your final copy. At the end of the quarter, you pick the one you want to be graded. That one you can make an iMovie with, publish a book, maybe a graphic novel, or even a poster, and we read them to our class.
Thank you so much, Camden. And a side note, Mrs. Kersky has been to one of our publishing weeks, and you can see from our pictures, publishing can be messy. Well, since we have fully implemented the Writers Workshop in our school, we've noticed a sincere joy from students in their writing. Ms. Sasson was fabulous enough to allow us to create a Young Authors Club at Coventry. When we sent the application home, we had hoped for at least 50 students to show some interest. Instead, we had more than 120 applications and had to limit, unfortunately, to five from grade levels two through five. Tonight, I have Tessa Holbrook and Samir Amira. Tessa is in fifth grade, Samir is in second. Samir, would you come up? Please, tell us, why did you join our club and what do you do?
At first, I thought I wouldn't be good at writing, but my mom said it would be fun, so I came. I'm writing a funny book about the school, where no one cares about the kids, and they keep doing whatever they want, like they stuck crayons in the toilet and it started to explode. It's fun to write funny stories.
Okay, thank you, Samir, very much. Now, let me explain, Samir is actually writing some continuing antics from a book he has read, but this demonstrates to our kiddos a genuine connection of writing and reading in our literacy model. Tessa, can you share with us next?
I never really liked writing, but when the school changed how we write, I started to enjoy it more. It really inspired me. It made me happy that I could choose what I write about. Now I want to be an author when I grow up. It's so much fun choosing my own writing. I also like to write about things that I would never normally write about. Going to the Young Authors Club is what I look forward to, that and Battle of the Books. To show you more of what we're doing in class and in the club, we'd like to invite you to our Writers Workshop What Authors Do event on January 31st, 2017, at 6:30 PM. We'll have a table of our club's writing, and our classrooms will be open to show our writing toolboxes.
Thank you so much, Tessa, and thank you to the rest of our students for coming tonight. We are so proud of what they're accomplishing, and it's only getting better with writing at Coventry Elementary School. Do you have any questions for our kiddos and our team tonight?
No questions, but fantastic presentation. I mean, really, they're truly, like, they're truly enjoying it, and that's the important thing.
I have visited Mrs. McNulty's classroom, and the students get down to business and have fun, and it's incredible to actually watch and see this in person. I'm very impressed. You had more than 100 requests to join that club.
We sure did, and I have to admit, I went begging if we could just add a couple more kids, but unfortunately, the numbers just don't add up. But maybe next year, now that we know, we'll be better prepared.
Well, that definitely tells us that the students at Coventry Elementary School enjoy writing. That's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Read Across America, Dr. Shandor.
Yes, for our next presentation, Carol Bauer, teacher from Grafton, Bethel Elementary, will now come forward and share information pertaining to Read Across America, as well as introduce her guests.
As they are setting up, we have representatives from York High School and from TAB High School that will be our musicians for this evening. We have Walter Buck, Will Siblis, Matt Willard, Tyler Smith, Andrew Johnson from York, and Grace Fortis, and Rachel Ray from TAB High.
Dr. George, you bring your guests on?
No, I didn't. If I'd known, I would have.
Good evening. Thank you to you, the York County School Board members, who have used the National Education Association's Read Across America to encourage caring adults to volunteer in our schools. The whimsical and zany prose of Dr. Seuss has been the inspiration of the NEA's Read Across America, and York County schools have joined in celebrating reading fun with the good doctor in mind. This year marks the 20th anniversary of the NEA's Read Across America, which is a celebration of diverse readers and the importance of reading with a child. But reading itself comes in many different forms.
Diversity takes practice and patience, and it comes in all forms, including the way a guitar plays its instrument. It sets the mood and lays the foundation for bigger and better things, like when an entire combo comes together. A good story helps set the mood and creates a better understanding of other viewpoints.
Other places you'll go, there's fun to be done, there are horns to be played, and there are books to be won.
Diversity in books is important, because it is what makes people read and understand other places and viewpoints. We read books and play music to learn and entertain ourselves. And I think that diversity in books and music is important, because it teaches you that you're not the only culture on the earth. There's always enough room for new ideas, and to learn how to make your deeds count every day.
Today is a great day, and we are off to great places. We are off and away, to celebrate reading and music in our own special way.
Seuss characters have graced classrooms and readings. We have collected socks and pajamas, books and food. In previous years, we have used the census to count on reading. This year, we are asking volunteers to bring in their culture and stories to our students.
You are never too old, too wacky, too wild, to pick up a book and read with a child.
Consider the messages of these musicians, Dr. Seuss and others, and pick up a book to read with a child. Take time to read books with different heroes and heroines, assorted situations, and diverse cultures. Along with the YEA, York County schools are proud to celebrate Read Across America. This year, each school is challenged to have 120 volunteers read with students. Or, at the secondary level, have 120 students read with younger children during the month of February and the first week of March around Dr. Seuss's birthday, March 2nd.
Have a concert right here.
You know, I think we should actually sell some CDs. It could be a good fundraiser.
But what an opportunity to take and blend the arts with reading like that. That was remarkably one of the best presentations of Read Across America kickoff we've had since I've been on the board.
Mrs. Bauer, you outdid yourself this year. That was incredible.
Very well done.
Thank you to York High School and TAB. York High School band, Richard Purvis, appreciate that.
Yes, talented students, boy.
And we're going to take a break, so we may come down and visit with our award winners. We will now resume our meeting. We have two presentations. The first from the Youth Commission, Dr. Shandor. First, unfinished business. We usually don't have unfinished business, so of course I skip over it. We do not have any. So now, presentations for Youth Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. This evening, we have the Youth Commission with us. We have students from the York County Youth Commission here to share an update with us this evening. This is a 15-member student-led group appointed annually by the Board of Supervisors to represent student interest and concerns to the Board as well as the School Board. We have asked them to come tonight to give us an update on their work this year and share some results with us from a recent student survey that they sponsored. They will also share some upcoming news of particular interest to high school students and their parents. At this point in time, I'd like to invite Matthew Knolls, the Youth Commission's chairman this year, to come to the podium.
Good evening, members of the School Board, Chairman Haywood, and Dr. Victor Shandor. On behalf of the York County Youth Commission, I would like to sincerely thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. At the York County Board of Supervisors meeting on December 20th, I shared the results to the county question included in our December survey to high school students within the county. Today, the Student Relations Committee behind me will share with you the results to that question and the results from the rest of the survey, which focus primarily on school-related issues. I would now like to introduce a fellow member of the Commission, Elizabeth DeJager.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Shandor, citizens, and the youth of York County. My name is Elizabeth DeJager, a member of the York County Youth Commission. With me, I have Rachel Brotherton, Khalil Goddard, Sarah Blanton. Abby Gretsch and Brittany Lawrence couldn't make it today, but they assisted in the preparation for tonight, so we want to recognize them as well. Together, we are the Student Relations Committee, one of the Youth Commission's three committees. Our primary purpose is to gather information on the views of county high schoolers in relation to county and school issues. Our second committee, the Special Projects Committee, plans and oversees community outreach events. They are planning to assist with the community-wide racial unity event. Our final committee, the Public Relations Committee, works to increase citizens' awareness of our commission and is currently in the process of creating more outlets for citizens to communicate with our commission. It is our privilege to brief you tonight on the Youth Commission's activities to date and the results of our latest survey. We also appreciated having school representatives there, including Dr. Robert George, Dr. Victor Shandor, and Mr. Albert Green. This year, we have been issued a challenge not to merely be problem reporters to county and school officials, but to strive to be problem solvers as well. On September 10th, the Commission took on Hampton Roads Academy's ropes course. The challenges our group overcame taught us lessons in communication, leadership, patience, and teamwork. By the end of the day, a diverse group of complete strangers from seven different schools became a closely knit team of friends. Here you can see each of our committees, which we chose at our first monthly Commission meeting on September 14th at the Yorktown Library. The Commission also elected officers, including Matthew Knolls as chairman, Rachel Brotherton as vice chair, and Melina Cienzki as secretary. I previously mentioned our committee's overall purpose, to find out what the youth in the county care about, was previously done solely through lunchtime, half-paper mini-surveys. This year, we decided to take a slightly different approach. Not only did we make adjustments to the normal survey, which will be addressed later, but we also decided to introduce focus groups of concerned teens to, as we were challenged, not only discuss problems in our community, but to come up with solutions. Furthermore, we chose to explore in-depth the enforcement of the dress code. An issue that we've seen, as did previous Commissions, is a very real concern to many students in the community. Finally, our committee looks forward to heading up the Youth Commission's preparations for sponsoring the town hall meetings at individual high schools in late April. And thanks to the School Board for your continued participation. Now Rachel Brotherton will present the findings of our most recent survey.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Brotherton, the vice chairman of the York County Youth Commission. In early December, we distributed our first semester survey to high school students. This year, we moved away from the pen and paper lunchtime mini-surveys carried out in the past. For greater efficiency, we used the program Survey Monkey to create an online survey, which saved paper as well as time administering, calculating, and analyzing the data. During each lunch period, volunteers distributed the link to the survey. For the past five years, the average survey response rate has been 32%. In December, 733 students throughout the five public high schools took the survey, which is 18% of the student population. We are not troubled by the difference, since we believe it can clearly be attributed to the last-minute changes to our original plan, which was to have the students take the surveys during class. In three of the schools, we were not able to muster the necessary volunteers to distribute the survey link to students during lunch on such short notice. However, in two of the schools where we had sufficient volunteers to ensure everyone was given the link, the response rate was much higher. 53% of the students at York River Academy and 35% of the students at Bluton High School responded to the survey. In the future, these short surveys will be given during class in order to provide maximum participation. Not only will the students be more focused, but everyone will have a better chance to take the quick survey if they are interested. We also found it difficult to administer the survey on just one day. We want to give teachers a two- or three-day window to give the survey, eliminating the need for student volunteers and allowing teachers to choose where the survey best fits into their individual lesson plans. The success of our surveys depends on students participating. The more students that take a survey, the better it will represent the student body. We believe our plan for the next survey will provide the most reliable results while minimizing classroom disruptions. We want to especially thank Mr. Douglas Mead and his school information and technology staff for their assistance in ensuring the administration of the survey using personal devices went smoothly. Our first question asks students to rank the following in order of importance to them. We asked about, in order of importance, as chosen by the respondents, preparedness for finals, ASWELs, and AP exams, school hours, school lunches, online classes, and dress code enforcement and punishment. These are some of the biggest issues we saw in the schools, so we decided to focus on them this year. We were a little surprised by the answers and hope to further explore some of these topics in future surveys. It is worth noting that the topic of school hours is one of the biggest concerns students have. This next question asks students if they'd ever taken an online class, and if so, through which program. We decided to ask about online classes because we've heard complaints about their quality and wanted to see how many people they affect. 70% of students had never taken an online class, which is understandable because many underclassmen are taking less specific classes that are offered in building. We may further survey just the students who have taken a virtual class to see how they feel about the experience. The next question asked about student lunch habits. We chose to investigate how many people buy lunch in response to concerns about the quality of school food. The majority of students responded that they packed their lunch every day. We were surprised by how many students said that they didn't eat lunch and are curious about their reasons. However, these numbers may be slightly overinflated due to the time it takes for students to buy lunch, time that they are unable to spend answering surveys. This question investigated an issue that we know the School Board has also been looking into: school hours. More than half of the students supported pushing school back, the majority of them wanting only an extra 40 minutes before the first bell. We were shocked that a quarter of the students wanted to move school earlier by 20 minutes, but would not advise waking students any earlier than they already do, as few students would bemoan a later start, but the vast majority dread setting their alarm clock even five minutes earlier. We know that a similar question was asked in last year's survey. So really, this question was a warm-up to prepare respondents for our next question. More important than the exact timing of the school bell is the effect the start time will have on students' jobs, club sports, and other activities. A slight majority of students said that it wouldn't affect them at all, but we are concerned about the almost 22% of students that would be negatively affected by starting school later, coupled with another 9.6% who said either an earlier or later start time would negatively affect them. That means about 32% of students would be hurt by a later start. Many students, especially older ones, have after-school jobs that they are already struggling to balance with clubs and sports, so making school start and end later would make it more difficult for them to get to these activities. While we suggest that school times be moved later, we would not encourage starting later much later than 8:00 AM to minimize the effect on after-school activities. Our next question asked about a rather controversial issue at the moment and one of our committee's topics of interest. Last year, the dress code was updated, leading to an increase of dress code violations and complaints. We are not concerned with the specifics of the dress code. Instead, we asked students whether they felt it was fairly enforced. 83% of respondents think the enforcement is unfair, and 68% of all respondents say it's stricter for females. The YCSD handbook states that the dress code's purpose is to "promote a safe learning environment which eliminates distractions, increases the focus on instruction, and promotes responsible dress rules for all students." Our committee supports this, believing that a dress code helps promote a professional learning environment and will be expected of us in the working world. However, we want to ensure that it is emphasized that the distraction is the clothing, not the students. Too many times have we all heard the phrase, "You're distracting the boys," which, while not necessarily true, is demeaning to both girls and boys. We recommend that the School Board encourages faculty and administrators to use terminology that is not gender-specific and cannot be viewed as degrading. Students should adhere to the dress code because they understand that it supports a professional learning environment, not because of shame. We think that with a few simple changes in language, the percentage of students having issues with the fairness of dress code enforcement will decrease. issues with the fairness of dress code enforcement will decrease. Our last question is about whether or not students feel supported by teachers and faculty. High school is a time of great change and adjustment in students' lives, and it is essential that they feel supported by the adults around them. Fortunately, the majority of students, 71%, do feel supported, but unfortunately, that leaves almost 30% of students who do not feel that they are getting the support they need at school. This was a general question, and there could be many reasons why these students do not feel supported. We may further explore this in the future to help give us a better understanding. For now, in an attempt to make these students feel more comfortable and supported, we want to increase awareness of the fact that each school has a psychologist or guidance counselor available to talk to them if they feel that they need assistance. Before closing, I would also like to mention that the time to nominate high school students living within the county for one of the 2016 Outstanding Youth Award scholarships is fast approaching. These scholarships recognize exceptional character and achievement in four categories: community service, compassion, courage, and overall achievement. Anyone can nominate someone for these awards, including family members, friends, teachers, coaches, counselors, and youth workers. Nominations must be received at POC's Recreation and Tourism by February 15th. One recipient will be named for each category to receive a $500 educational scholarship. Additionally, we want to encourage any current 8th through 11th grade students living in York County to consider applying for next year's Youth Commission. These applications are due at POC's Recreation and Tourism no later than March 8th. Interested students and their parents are invited to attend all or part of our next monthly meeting, scheduled for 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, February 8th, at the Yorktown Library. Guests will be able to see what a meeting is like and can meet commissioners before and afterwards to ask questions. Anyone interested in nominating a student for an Outstanding Youth Award or in applying for next school year's Youth Commission may find details online at www.ycyc.info, or may call POC's Recreation and Tourism at 890-3500. Ms. Chairman, on behalf of my colleagues at the York County Youth Commission and especially the Students' Relation Committee, we would like to thank you and the school board for this opportunity to report to you. We excitedly look forward to working more closely with the schools this year to accomplish our goals and solve problems within our county. Finally, we would like to thank Matthew Knolls, our chairman, for his help in the preparation for this presentation. This concludes our presentation, and if you have any questions, we will gladly take them now.
We thank you for that brilliant information. Is there anything, any questions from Board Member?
I guess that was a comment that Heywood, fabulous presentation, by the way. Y'all rock it every year. My wife, many years ago, was a member of the Youth Commission, back when, way, way back. No, don't tell her I said that. But I think the part where you said, you know, young people, 8 to 11, you know, grade level in York County, I hope the young people are listening and pay attention. I hope we can push this information out using every avenue possible. It's a wonderful leadership opportunity. It's a wonderful opportunity to be part of something bigger and greater. So I hope the young people really take that seriously and apply for the Youth Commission in York County. It serves so well. This is an example of that. And so we hope that Mr. Rick Smithhurst back there and his staff end up with like a thousand applications they have to go through. Sorry, Rick, but that's, I just know the value of what y'all bring to the table. And tonight was an example of that, so thank you.
I appreciate your presentation so much. It's really good information for this board to have, for the superintendent to have. One of the questions about the dress code, we know that we hear that every time we go to the high schools and have the forum that you all sponsor. I was just curious, did you share that information with the principals? That, what was it, 80-something percent think that the dress code is unfair toward girls? I think that would be good information to share with each principal as well, and thank you. You did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
Do you have a musical number?
Yes, I did prepare one. Ready? It's me, it's me.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the information. Great. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
I know, I got one more question. Sorry, I just thought about it. When y'all design a survey as a group, do y'all get feedback from, where do you come up with your questions? Is it something you just kind of generate among yourselves, or is it other people involved? Or do you ask school division or county staff and ideas of people?
Some questions we get from other committees. For example, we work with special projects to see if there's interest for activities they're considering sponsoring. Most of these in the first survey were more general questions that we pulled ourselves. If you guys have any questions you want us to ask, we of course will accept recommendations. But for our next survey, we're just going to go more deeply into these answers.
Yeah, that's where I was kind of going with that, is that if there's a way that possibly we might want to know something, and you're the perfect avenue to get that question out to young people that they know is being asked by you, not by us, might be something to think about, so.
And to see how that works with the survey and online for next year, that we know we can get increased feedback.
And participation.
Fantastic, yes, thank you. Thank you. And we now have our presentation on the construction report.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Sheehard, Associate Director for Capital Plans and Projects, to come up and present. If he can start off with a musical number. No, I'm just kidding.
I will not sing or dance, I'm sorry.
It's going to be difficult to top those two, Mark.
Impromptu, too.
Unless he has really outstanding news.
Yes, outstanding news will be good.
Well, I will give you, I will give you the capital projects report for the month of January. It will be very short, and I have a few projects here. I do not have any pictures for this evening. The weather has not cooperated, so I have, but I have information for you.
So no song, no dance, and no pictures?
No song, no dance, no pictures.
I know, I know.
It's going to be really boring.
Moving on.
So the first project I want to touch on is Walla Mill Elementary School, and you know this, and it's winding up very rapidly here. We're getting very close to the end of this project here. We do have, the roofers are finishing up the last portion of the roofing we had, gave to them. We gave them an additional portion of the roof. They roofed what they were supposed to do, and then we gave them another portion, and so they're going to complete the entire, the entire building will have a brand-new roof on it. And they have a few things left to do with this 85% here, some, the building is watertight right now, but they have just some trim work and things to do on the roof. The contractors are continuing to work on punch list items inside and outside the building. They've been chipping out some mortar and chipping out some caulk and repainting some spots and touching up and so, things like that, so they're still working up there, getting very close to being done now. The next project I'd like to touch on is Yorktown Elementary School, additions and renovations and replacement, roof replacement there, HVACs and HVAC systems and expanding the building. The invitation for bids, or IFB, was issued on January 11th. We had a pre-bid meeting with contractors in the cafeteria there at York Elementary on January 8th, and fielded questions. We had a fairly good turnout. Would like to have more contractors there, but we had some reputable general contractors we'd worked with before there, and subcontractors that we'd worked with before. The initial construction of this project will start during the spring break, or this is what we anticipate. This is breaking ground in front of the school there for the addition, put the footers in and things like that, and that portion of the project will continue during the entire school year, or the rest, the rest of the school year from spring break on to the finish of school. We anticipate substantial completion to be reached in August 18th of 2017, so in time for the school year. At Bethel Manor Elementary, we have the renovations to 300 and 400 halls there, and we expect the IFB to be issued by January 27th. The construction there will start June, in June. This will be the week, the Monday of the week after school, the last week of school, and we expect substantial completion there also on August 18th in time for the school The next project is TAB Elementary School. This one here is getting very close to doing the A&amp;E, or the design for it, is the design and administrative replacement of the HVAC systems at TAB Elementary School. So this is not the actual replacement, this is getting the, hiring the architect to do the job, to do the design work. We received proposals on December 15th. The evaluation committee reviewed these proposals and made some recommendations to purchasing. We have a interview, some interviews on February 2nd with the architectural, the winning architectural firms to select the finalists. And this design of this HVAC replacement will take place this year, and we anticipate taking it out to bid either late, late November or in December this year. So we expect the construction to take place next year, summer of 2018, at TAB Elementary School. The last project is the new elementary school, and this is for the, this is not actual construction of the building, but hiring the architectural firm to do the design work there. We have an RFP that went out this morning, RFP 2013. Proposals are due on February 9th. Once we receive these proposals, we'll go ahead and again, our evaluation committee will review these proposals and select the finalists, and we'll, again, we'll have a interview the architects and select the finalist. The schematic design phase should be done by September 1st of this year, and we will give the additional phases of the design project to the architect as we get closer to determining a construction timeline for the building. Right now, we do not have a set timeline for that building, and that is, will be determined as we see the residential areas start growing here. And that's my last slide for this evening. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. The members have questions. I'm just excited to see the new school online, even if it's just getting a design. It's something new. We're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
I have one more question from Mr. Sheehard. It rained pretty hard today, and I sent Mr. Sheehard a message during a meeting related to one of our complexes that has apparently leaked for the last 20 years, so I wanted Mr. Sheehard to respond to that.
Well, I did tour Grafton Complex from one end to the other end this afternoon, and there were very, very few leaks in the building. There was some very small, about three or four-inch spots on, several spots. In the high school entrance, there was only two on the ceiling tiles, what I'm talking about, and on the middle school side, there was only one little tiny one there, and that was after all that tremendous amount of rain we had received. Again, we don't have, the roof is not completely coated yet, so the final product is not there. None of the, none of the water leaked in the atrium. It was amazing how much they had, how much they had stemmed the flow of the water coming into that.
And I spent some time at Grafton Middle today, and they were thrilled that there weren't any leaks, so, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We now have two opportunities for comments of citizens. The first is the public participation at board meetings. As I call your name, I ask that you come to the podium, give your address, and you're limited to three minutes, and please address your comments to the board. The first is Delphi Hedgepath.
Good evening. My name is Delphi Hedgepath. I live in 202 Yorkview Road, Yorktown. And it's been a wonderful school board meeting. I must say I've enjoyed every minute of it.
Wonderful.
We're doing a good job in York County. My main objective in appearing before you tonight, though, is to express my appreciation for and to personally thank you for sponsoring the public forum on the topic of the effect of early start times on the teenage brain. The two speakers were excellent and enlightening and brought expert opinion to the topic. I appreciate the fact that you, as a board, are making an honest effort to address the concerns many of us have expressed on this issue, as it relates to our students in York County, in particular, our high school students. I didn't know the York County Youth Commission was going to be making their report tonight, but it seems like the consensus of the student population falls in line with what our concerns are. At least that was my interpretation of the report. But I also wanted to inform you, just for your information, that I attended the Women's March in Washington on Saturday, to show my support for funding for superior public education, starting at the national level, as well as at the local and state level. So thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Next is Randy Hall, and I see Josh Hall and Ethan Hall. Is everybody together?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, you will be the presenter?
I will, and I'll offer an opportunity for a couple of the scouts to have a few comments the board allows.
That's fine, if you will give your name and address, and when they come up, if they would do the same, too. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Good evening, distinguished school board members. Chairwoman Heywood, Dr. Shandor. My name is Randy Hall. I'm an adult leader in Boy Scout Troop 306. We are chartered by St. Joan of Arc's Catholic Church in Yorktown, right off Highway 17. And today, I have a group of Boy Scouts working on their Communications Merit Badge. That badge consists of completing numerous requirements, including things like writing and presenting speeches, interviewing professionals, writing letters to officials, planning a script as a master of ceremonies at a big event, and studying different careers in a communications career field. So that's just some of the requirements. One of the capstone requirements is to attend a public meeting and to look at an issue, and so in light of that, what I've had the scouts do is, we have a copy of the memo from July 11th from the County of York for the new school, so it was opportune to see the discussion on it just a few moments ago. And we looked at such things as the site location, some of the tremendous communication challenges you have when you have a project and something like that, that the county is trying to deal with. And so I gave them the plans, and I gave them the letter, and allowed them the opportunity to discuss it in our communications work groups. So with that said, what I'd like to do is just thank you guys for addressing the issue. We're glad that there is going to be a new school in the county, and I wanted to offer an opportunity for any of the scouts to have any comments.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackson Pendleton. I live on 105 Mason Court, and I'm homeschooled. As a homeschooler, I want to be able to participate in public school. Virginia law allows local school boards to count home-instructed and private school students who attend public schools on a part-time basis in the average daily membership count for school funding. This law offers a strong financial incentive for schools to allow part-time enrollment of homeschoolers. The law, Virginia law is Section 22.1-253.132. Fifty-one of our, 51% of our state schools allow this, and fewer than 1% enroll. I attended Yorktown Elementary School for two years and received Student of the Year in 2012. I would have, I would love to participate in some programs such as the science fair or the debate team, take a chemistry class, start a computer club. Homeschoolers still pay tax dollars for your schools and should be allowed to participate in these programs. Many homeschoolers do so because their children excel in certain areas. If they were allowed to participate in that team of your school, it would raise your winnings. Tim Tebow was homeschooled and allowed to participate on his high school team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other scouts that would like to address the board, have something to say? Okay. If not, we thank you for being here, and we say good luck as you work towards your eagle. Samuel Eery. Samuel Yuri.
Sam Yuri, three oh two Penrith Cross, New Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine two. Today, the VEA spent some time in Richmond lobbying, lobbying for funding, lobbying for fair treatment. But what I want to leave with you is that we left with the delegates and senators that we met with a support paper that basically states that Virginia has let down our public school teachers. As we move further away from the recession, the average teacher salaries in Virginia move farther away from the national average. Currently, Virginia's average teacher salary is seven thousand two hundred and thirty below the national average. That's including Northern Virginia. You remove Northern Virginia, it's probably five figures. Meanwhile, Virginia struggles to hire and retain quality teachers. Positions designated as hard to staff no longer include special education and math. The current list of critical needs includes such subjects as social studies, English, and elementary grades. Virginia's teacher shortage is reaching a crisis level, and that's from the Virginia Department of Education. Since two thousand and nine, the General Assembly has provided little to no state support for salary increase to our public school teachers. In a ten-year period, they've funded it twice. Ten years, they've funded it twice. Since two thousand and sixteen, all VRS eligible school employees are required to pay five percent of their salaries to the Virginia retirement system. We have sadly come a long way from the time when the General Assembly included teacher salary improvement language and incentive payments in the Appropriations Act. Now state's support for teacher salary increases is included in revenue reserves that can be easily reverted back to the general fund. This is a clear indication that the General Assembly no longer places a significant emphasis on paying our public school teachers what they deserve. We strongly recommend them implementing a funding, implementing and funding a state policy to move Virginia's average teacher salary to at least the national average. That would demonstrate a plan. And one of the things is, if you don't plan, you plan to fail. And right now, that's where we seem to be. At the very least, it can be said that we had some attention-getting activities at the Virginia Assembly today. Budget, one of the things, I wish they had all kinds of great news, but from what we were hearing, all they said was, we have a bill, which is language, I'll emphasize language, and language without money is nothing. It is a travesty to pit employee groups against each other. And right now, they're talking about giving three percent to one group of state employees and ignoring teachers and other groups of people. That should not be happening. You finance what your priorities are. It's time for Virginia and everybody else to make their priority education. I've got a brochure to you, because right now, we've got a public relations campaign going. Some of the people have seen our spots showing up on the radios already and on TV spots as well, especially in the Tidewater area and the Richmond area. It's a little pricey to do it up in Northern Virginia. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julie Bednarek.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Julie Bednarek, and I live at two oh three Blevins Run, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine three. I'm here tonight to urge you to implement a change in school start times for York County schools from the current seven twenty AM school start time to a more traditional start time of eight AM or later. Thank you very much for putting on the information session regarding the impact of school start times on teens presented at York High on November thirtieth. It was fabulous. The research put forth at this information session overwhelmingly demonstrated the advantages a change to a more traditional start time would bring. Since early school start times were shown to be the principal cause of sleep deprivation in teens, a change to a more traditional school start time would allow teens to get adequate sleep. Adequate sleep is crucial for optimal memory, mood, immunity, and academic performance, for reducing sports-related injuries, and for fighting the following: obesity, high blood pressure, heart disease, diabetes, substance abuse, impulsivity, and risk-taking. Finally, two separate studies in Virginia showed that schools with later school start times had significantly lower teen car crash rates than schools with earlier start times. In other words, sleep deprivation is a leading factor in the increase in the incidence of teen car crashes. Our most important concern should be the physical and emotional health of our students. That concern is compatible with allowing them the best opportunity for academic success as well. It is a fact that teens need more sleep than adults, requiring an average of nine point two five hours per night. It is a fact that teens' sleep cycles cause them to have difficulty falling asleep before eleven PM or waking up before eight AM. And it is a fact that teens' melatonin levels, which is the hormone we know that promotes sleep, peak at seven AM, whereas it is three hours earlier for adults at four AM. We must acknowledge the differences between teen brains and adult brains and adjust school start times to accommodate teen biology. Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration on this very important issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Howe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kathleen Howe, and I reside at one twenty-one Lance Way, Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine three. Recently, I spoke to a supporter of an eight AM or later school start time for all students within York County. She currently homeschools her child due to their difficulty in getting up in the morning. She brought this to the attention of their pediatrician, who informed her teens become night owls and need to compensate for their loss of sleep in the morning. Julie Bednarek told you some of the effects sleep deprivation has on our teens, as have I in the past. I stand before you tonight, representing several hundred supporters within York County that signed an educational petition I co-founded with two other parents. The petition name is "Improving Student Health With Traditional School Start Times." This petition does not include those that support a traditional school start time of eight AM or later, but are afraid to sign it due to repercussions and peer pressure. Many people also feel uncomfortable about public speaking, and therefore, will never attend these meetings, unfortunately. We also had supporters from regions in Virginia, other states, and countries as far away as Malaysia sign the petition. These names were deleted so that we only track supporters within York County. I'd like to thank the Youth Commission tonight. I too, I did not get a chance to see who was speaking tonight. So it was nice to see that they came with some information tonight, which basically reinforced us, and it was reassuring to see that fifty-one point eight percent of the students surveyed said that a change in school hours would not affect them negatively. I know that the York County School Board, as well as the Commission, have been working together. To date, we have significant support in all five districts. We, speaking for the several hundred supporters, urge the school board to continue on this mission and implement the next step, bringing us closer to possibly implementing a new traditional school start time for the fall two thousand and eighteen school year. Thank you again for all you do, and we look forward to seeing the citizens thrive based on the decisions that we make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing. I just want to thank the supporters that did come here this evening, because with the rain and everything, and those rushing in, it does mean a lot. Thank you for those who came.
Dr. Judy McMillan.
Good evening. My name is Judy McMillan. I live at one ten Bellows Place in Yorktown, two three six nine three. As I signed in this evening, it was primarily to register my attendance. Not wearing my reading glasses, did not realize I was registering to speak. So, thank you for, thank you for calling me. And I would just like to say that I'm here as a grandmother of two students in the York County Public Schools. I'm very proud of them and the education they're receiving. It couldn't be any better, in my opinion. You're, you're all doing an amazing job. I'm a retired educator myself, and so I, I value this a great deal. My primary interest, having spoken once before on the topic of traditional school start times, is that of safety. I'm concerned about sleep-deprived drivers in high school. I'm concerned about some of these students who have to walk to the bus pickup areas in the dark. And we've experienced a few accidents with, with that over the years in my family. My question this evening would be, given the continued concern, interest, and evidence in favor of more traditional school start times, I, as a resident, would be interested in knowing why it is that we continue to maintain the early start times. It's just a curiosity to me. I ask the question, and I really don't get any answers. And so, perhaps my recommendation is that in a future newsletter or on your website, would it, you know, if time permits, would you please compile a list of the reasons why? There's not been any movement in the change of the start times of schools. In other words, it must be a long list of reasons why it's a good idea to start high school at seven twenty in the morning. I have no idea what those reasons are. I'd be very interested. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. This concludes one of the first comments from citizens. I'm going to move to the next, which is the public forum on the FY eighteen operating budget. Again, if you, if, as I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes. So I will open the public forum. The first speaker is Sam Yuri.
Sam Yuri, three oh two Penrith Cross, New Yorktown, Virginia, two three six nine two. I will make it short and to the point. York County schools are great schools. But what York County schools needs to put out there exactly what our needs are, totally, so people get a context of how much we've actually scaled back some of our operations and what impact those operations, the scaling back of those operations has had. Then people will have a more clear picture and understanding that when the school board and the superintendent recommend what they do, which is more austere than what the real needs are, they will say, oh, that sounds like a great idea, because that's significantly less than if we try to fund all this other stuff. So when we're talking about lack of printers, when we're talking about copying issues, when we're talking about textbook adoption issues, that should be given out in such a way that this is what the real cost would be if we were doing all the things that we're supposed to be doing to keep the schools exactly where we want them to be and be competitive with other school districts. It should not dictate, based on your zip code, how much money you get. And York County is in a great position compared to a whole lot of others, because we were at least able to give the pay raise this year to our people in spite of the state's lack of funding. But there are many school divisions that they couldn't do that. And the long-term effect is, we're going to be looking down the road and saying, now that we've given that pay raise, if nothing else falls in, what things are we going to have to cut in addition now to make up for that? And that shouldn't be the trade-off, because it's affecting the quality of our schools. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. David Forrest.
I am Dave Forrest. I live at one zero four Three Point Court in Yorktown. On January thirteenth, I participated in the strategic planning session in Grafton. Part of the exercise was identifying changes to the objectives. In light of the severe overcrowding and inadequate resources, I looked at the mission, goals, and objectives for something addressing the responsibility of the division to provide adequate resources to meet the state and federal standards and to avoid overcrowding. None of the existing objectives seem to capture this idea. I suggested that they add an objective for the school division to provide adequate facilities to meet state, state and federal standards, and add another objective to reduce overcrowding to the eighty-five to ninety percent level. I do not think that we meet these objectives now. Overcrowding at the elementary system is at the ninety-seven percent level, which makes it impossible to redistrict the schools into the eighty-five, ninety percent level. Elementary schools on the north end of the country overcrowded at the, were overcrowded at the one hundred and forty-three percent, one hundred and thirteen percent, one hundred and fifteen percent levels. These burdens on inadequate sites make it impossible to meet state standards, such as the complete lack of outdoor hard surface play areas at Yorktown Elementary as compared to the state standard requirement of two. Your strategic planning since two thousand and thirteen hasn't accomplished this so far. And with the current CIP and communications between the board and the board of supervisors, the future looks bleak. You've made trade-offs between adequate facilities and limited resources, settling for a nine point seven acre usable lot size for a core seven hundred student school, which will require eleven acres. Inadequate site size at the existing schools makes the parking and drop-off management complicated and dangerous, necessitating future expensive redesigns to correct problems that could have been avoided in the initial design. Sharing sites with other programs might look like a cautious cost efficiency, but it puts additional burdens on the limited lot sizes. You're also settling for a five hundred-seat school to fill a projected need of one hundred and eleven, or eleven hundred seats. In the past year, you've compromised and deferred significant amounts of maintenance improvements at no cost, trading plans for adequate resources for compliance with a weak revenue growth model and encouraging the board of supervisors to cut your budgets even further. The demographic development and depreciation models that you have, are the demographic development and depreciation models that you have, are they so inferior to the county's economic model that this is a good idea? When I asked the county budget planning for specifics about their model, Jeffrey Wassmer and Neil Morgans said the numbers are placeholders, and the plan is a plan to express the uncertainty in their, in their, in the out years in their model. The long-term school CIP should have good placeholders that, that provide adequate resources to meet the state standards and reduce overcrowding to the eighty-five, ninety percent level. Otherwise, the school board and the board of supervisors and the advocates will have no idea what it takes to maintain the system at what it needs to be. My parents and a few others have asked me what I intend, what I want to get out of standing up here. I want you guys to commit to provide adequate resources to enable our children to thrive. This commitment should be reflected in the strategic plan, the budget, and the CIP.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Pat Gallagher.
Mary Pat Gallagher, two nineteen, Silver Fox Trakes, Yorktown, two three six nine three. Good evening, Mrs. Haywood, members of the school board, and Dr. Shandor. To be competitive, according to Merriam-Webster, compete means to strive consciously or unconsciously for an objective. How many of you had to strive consciously to obtain or retain your current positions as York County School Board members or the superintendent? A competition or election that required constituents from your locality to vote for you to represent York County school employees and families in guaranteeing that you would uphold York County's mission, goals, and beliefs. Goal three of the mission is, the York County School Division will recruit, hire, retain, and support a diverse staff that meets our highest standards. One of the beliefs is believing that recruiting and retaining a highly qualified and diverse staff are paramount to the success of our students. With the current salaries of licensed and non-licensed staff, why would anyone want to compete to be employed by YCSD? I continually hear about YCSD staff members resigning to work in a neighboring division that offers a greater salary in order to not have to work two jobs. A comment taken from the two twenty, two thousand and sixteen climate survey provided by YEA, "It is really hard to get all the planning and grading done each night when so many of us have to work a second job just to make ends meet." I personally know of two non-licensed staff members on welfare exchanging food for food stamps to put food on their tables, and one- stamps to put food on their tables, and one has to pay for daycare. How is it possible to work two or more jobs, take care of family, and have time and energy to remain a highly qualified and diverse staff? Recruit, hire, retain, and support a staff that meets our highest standards and believe that the staff is paramount to the success, the success of our students? To meet our highest standards, I would want our teachers to have to compete for their opportunity to work for York County schools. Is it enough to just be able to fill a teaching position, or do we want teachers that strive consciously to be employed by York County schools? I know, I am speaking to the choir when it comes to discussing increasing salaries. YCSD has done a good job with the support from, with little support from the state, and in the last 10 years, the state has only provided financial support, two years, for salary increases. And I trust you want to maintain the highly qualified and diverse staff. The question is, how do you convince the Board of Supervisors the importance of retaining a staff that continually raises the expectations of their students to surpass the SOL scores that bring in new families to YCSD? What will it take for the Board of Supervisors to realize that it is the teachers and students of York County that is the foundation to their overall budget? I hope the answer is not that the scores stop falling, that the scores start falling because the highly qualified teachers had to find a new job. We want a competitive salary, continue to be amongst the best. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the individuals signing up for the public forum, and I now close the public forum. We now have the opportunity to have matters by board members. Dr. George, how's it feel down there? And I'm going to start with you first.
A little lonely.
You want to come back?
A little different. No, I, I want to make this brief. The hour's getting late. Just, once again, thank you for giving me the privilege of serving as board chair, and hopefully maybe I can jump back on for a year before this term is up, but I thoroughly enjoyed it. You guys are wonderful and have been very, very supportive. Thank you. Exams, get to bed early, everybody. Don't forget to send your kids to school on Monday, because that's been changed, you know. So, believe it or not, these little things sometimes slip through the cracks. Just a little reminder there. I hope everybody had a wonderful, wonderful break, and it was raring to go, and now the big countdown to, to June, right? So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Kersky.
First, I would like to thank everyone who spoke to us tonight. I appreciate seeing you and some of you we do see every month, and I think it's very important for you all to promote your issue in our meeting and to us. We are listening. I know it may look strange when you're standing there talking to this group, but we are listening, taking notes, and I do appreciate your voice so very much on these issues. They are all very important, so thank you for speaking to us. And next, I would just like to give a plug for the York Foundation for Public Education. They have great news. They have partnered recently with the new grocery store in Newport News, Whole Foods. And tomorrow, if you shop at Whole Foods, they will provide the York Foundation for Public Education 5% of tomorrow's profits. So I would just like to give a plug out there and encourage everyone to hop down to Newport News and shop and do their grocery shopping at Whole Foods, so the York Foundation for Public Education can earn more money to provide financial grants for teachers, staff, and students. Every month, we have a program, the Accents on Academics, and so many of those valuable educational programs are sponsored through the financial grants provided by the York Foundation for Public Education. So this is a way for the community to come out and shop at Whole Foods tomorrow so we can receive more funding. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Medford.
Thank you for letting me serve as vice chair again this year. And Dr. George, just want to say thank you for your service. I know you plan to circle back around. Things are busy, and so it timings everything, and we look forward to you leading the board as well as you did this past year. And with that, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. I know Dr. Shandor may acknowledge this, but I just wanted to say, Mr. Sheerhart, congratulations on your Apple Award.
Yes.
Fantastic. That was very, very nice. And for those of you all who aren't in the Williamsburg area, we have a magazine, Next Door Neighbor. And teacher Scott, Principal Scott Meadows is featured in this last, in the most recent copy of our Next Door Neighbor. And it's always interesting to find the different people that they will decide to present. Lastly, on last Monday, I attended with Dr. Shandor and staff the annual Martin Luther King NAACP Breakfast at the Williamsburg Lodge. We recognized 35 students, 36 students from our school division that was recognized there, and they are all fantastic students, fantastic GPAs, and what their plans for the future. So again, kudos to all of them. And with that, I move to financial matters. Mrs. Kersky, you have that.
Yes, I do. And if anyone wants to look over the financial reports, this information is available on the YorkCountySchools.org website under the School Board and the Board Docs document. So let's turn to the certificate for approval of claims. The total amount of individual claims certified for payment is $3,881,285.58, and that's for the month of December. I'll just go over a few of the significant expenditures. You'll see a total of more than $220,000 for special ed services for students at New Horizons, $62,000 for the sheriff's deputies at the high schools for the first quarter, $91,611 for a new 77-passenger school bus, and $274,833 for three 77-passenger school buses, and $95,752 for a 53-passenger special needs school bus. Two expenses totaling more than $61,000 for emergency restoration at TAB Elementary. I want to point out that this relates to the fire in the TAB kitchen when an ice machine malfunctioned, and our insurance will cover the cost of those damages and reimburse us. Then you'll just notice the usual monthly expenses for power, internet, SEDEXO. Note that with SEDEXO, we did have to replace a freezer in the cafeteria at Mount Vernon. You will see various construction and maintenance expenses to include parking lot lighting and exterior lighting at Mount Vernon, AC repairs at York Middle, CCTV camera replacement at TAB High, and several of the expenses for the additions and renovations at Waller Mill, more HVAC replacements at Yorktown Elementary, and roof repair at the Grafton Complex. Again, these are the big-ticket items. The expenses, along with smaller individual expenses, are listed in this document and total more than $3.8 million. Now if we turn to the monthly financial report, we have received to date more than $91.3 million and still have an uncollected balance of $42.5 million. If you notice, a new allotment on this document for $900,000. That $900,000 is for the transfer from the Revenue Stabilization Fund by the county to offset the reduction in Impact Aid payments from the federal government, and that was budgeted. Good news about Impact Aid I would like to share with you. We received $4 million of Impact Aid payments in December, and just last week, we received another payment of $2 million. Now, the $2 million is not included in this financial report. I'm just wanting to share some good news with you all. That brings our total amount of Impact Aid now within the $1.2 million of our budgeted line item for this revenue. Expenditures to date total $49.8 million. And let's move to the Food Service Report, which is expected based on the trends according to staff with YCSD and SEDEXO. We have received to date more than $1.22 million, and expenditures total $1.3 million. And finally, let's go to the Resolution 17-04, authorizing specific procurement. We have $521,000 for Citrix licenses, $132,000 for warranty renewal of network switches, $186,606 for special education services at Plan B Academy. This amount is for four students in the autistic program there, and I want to note that the state will reimburse us for 40% to 45% of that cost. And more school buses. We're on a roll with school bus purchasing. Three more new school buses for a total of $270,333. Now, I want to point out that this funding comes from the reversion funding from the county. We have an agreement with the Board of Supervisors that when we turn over a surplus at the end of the fiscal year, they will provide that reversion funding back to us, and it's earmarked for technology and school buses, so we are able to purchase additional buses. And with that, I move to the financial report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ford, would you pull the board, please?
Yes. Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haywood?
Yes. We move now to our consent calendar. There are three items under consent. First is consideration of approval personnel actions. Second, consideration of approval for donations totaling $4,834.47, and approval of minutes from a work session and a special meeting on December 5th, and a special meeting on December 8th. And I am going to ask if we will pull the December 8th minutes at that meeting. Dr. George, Ms. Kersky, and Mr. Richardson were present. Mr. Medford, you and I were absent at that meeting. According...
Madam Counsel, didn't we determine we can still vote for a meeting in minutes so we don't have to?
Yes.
So we can still do that? Okay. So, do any, are items need to be pulled from the consent calendar? If not, may we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Do we need to pull? We're not pulling anything.
We're not pulling it then. If legal counsel say it can stay.
I move the consent calendar.
Second, please. Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mrs. Kersky and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the consent calendar. Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thanks. Now, I just wanted to be sure on that one because with him not being here tonight and you and I were absent before, we're good. As we move down to action items, the first is consideration of approval of a proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month, February 2017. Dr. Shandor.
Yes. As you, as you know, the division's mission is to engage all students in learning the skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world. Career and technical education is an important component of that mission in that it equips students with the academic knowledge as well as technical and employable skills that provide them more career options. The month of February is dedicated to acknowledging not only the importance of CTE programs, but the ever-changing curriculum to meet the demands of today and of the future.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Dr. George to approve the proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month. Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. The second item is consideration of approval of a proclamation for National School Counseling Week, February 6th through the 10th, 2017. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. The first week in February is traditionally designated as National School Counseling Week to focus attention on the unique contribution school counselors make to our schools. Comprehensive school counseling programs address students' academic and social welfare, provide much-needed resources for students, parents, teachers, and administrators, which ultimately support student achievement. We have an amazing team of counselors in YCSD, and we want to acknowledge and thank them.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Move motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Dr. George and seconded by Mrs. Kersky to approve the proclamation for National School Counseling Week. Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes. And consideration of approval of a proclamation for Read Across America Day, March 2nd, 2017.
I don't think we want to do this one, do we?
Yeah.
I move approval.
Just kidding. So, earlier, Mrs. Bauer and her traveling band and her team of students shared earlier this evening, March 2nd is Read Across America Day in celebration of Dr. Suss's birthday, which promotes reading and adult involvement in education throughout the school division. We encourage staff members to go out into our schools and read to our students in a way to celebrate reading and to engage with our students. I look forward to this every year. I can't wait to get out to the schools. Ms. Bauer, I trust I'm invited back to your classroom for a third year in a row, and I know our board members will be active out in the schools as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
I move approval. A second.
Second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mrs. Kersky and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the proclamation for Read Across America Day. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haywood?
Yes. And our last action item, consideration of approval of Resolution 17-03, a resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, to request the County Board of Supervisors to approve a transfer of $800,000 from the school division's workers' compensation reserve fund to the school division's capital projects fund, and to approve the funds for the purchase of buses and instructional materials. I know Mr. Jarrett spoke on that earlier in the work session, and Dr. Shandor.
He did, he did. And I'm going to, Mr. Jarrett, I'm going to ask if you can please come to the podium just to provide a little bit of information for, for our community or folks who didn't tune in earlier to the work session.
Yes, and I will be brief, but just a quick summation is, the school division operates a fund. It's a reserve fund because, for our workers' compensation claims. We're self-insured in workers' compensation for all claims up to a half a million dollars. So for any occurrence that happens in the workers' comp area, we have a responsibility up for that first half a million dollars. After that, we have catastrophic insurance. What that means is we have to carry some reserves in the event we have a year where we have significant claims. Okay? And we've had this fund probably for 10 to 15 years now, and we've, it's built up to about $3.8 million in the fund, and we've worked with our workers' compensation third-party administrator who administers all the claims for us. And we've come to kind of a middle ground of what we feel like would be a reasonable amount to keep in the reserve fund. And so what we're recommending tonight is, through the resolution that you have before you, is to use $800,000 of the 3.8, and those funds will be directed $600,000 to buses and $200,000 for instructional materials, primarily textbooks, well, 100% textbooks. It would be for an adoption of some AP textbooks that are on schedule for this year. The, the $800,000 will not cause any sort of financial stress on the workers' compensation reserve fund. We've done an analysis of that, and we feel like the confidence level of the reserve that would be in the fund of about $3 million is sufficient to cover any claims. We've been very fortunate in this fund. We budget about $350,000 a year to transfer to it, and our claims are running about $350,000. So we've had some very good experience of assuming that we don't have any catastrophic loss, losses of a large magnitude in the upcoming years, this fund should be fine with $3 million in. Any questions I can answer? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mrs. Kersky and seconded by Dr. George to approve Resolution 17-03. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. We have, do not have any policy for discussion nor first reading. You will find under second reading, which we have to have action tonight, has second reading for the inclusion of file JHOM, food allergies, into the York County School Board Policy Manual. We are doing an expedited push-through the night so that we will have this on file. It went from discussion to... It went from discussion to second reading. Dr. Shandor, is there anything else you would add to this?
No, nope. Wouldn't have anything to add.
If no more concerns or comments from board members, I ask you for approval.
I'll move approval.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mrs. Kersky to approve the second reading of the policy. Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes, thank you. And now to Dr. Shandor for your report.
All right. I have a 45-minute PowerPoint to go through. Just kidding. Just kidding. I have a couple of items. First, regarding weather conditions, I know everybody likes to talk about weather. That was a joke. I want to thank our students and parents for their patience and understanding pertaining to the weather. Each storm brings its own issues and concerns with the school system depending on the length of the storm when the storm hits. So I want to thank all of our team members for their support throughout that weather event. I also want to thank our operations team, Greg Dolak and his team, again, do a wonderful job getting out there and getting, getting to our driveways and our parking lots in the schools. I also want to thank the county staff. Talked with Neil Morgan. He dispatched a number of folks to come and help us as well, and VDOT was very supportive of us. So hopefully we won't have any more weather events, and we'll be able to smooth sail to June. Probably shouldn't have said that. I also enjoyed the NAACP Actso Breakfast, just a couple staff members. Dr. Jones was there, along with Ms. Haywood. All of our high school principals were there, from all five of our high schools, a number of other staff, Mr. Albert Green, and a number of folks in the operations department. So I want to thank him for attending that. That's a wonderful event and a really great opportunity to showcase all of our students. And in closing, I want to mention that this week is Virginia School Principals Week, January 22nd through the 28th. Last month, we approved a proclamation in recognition of our principals. But once again, I want to say, we are very fortunate. We have 19 schools, 19 of the best principals that I've worked with, and I say "work with" because they're a good group and they really, really push hard for kids and support our teachers. So they really work hard to make a positive difference in the lives of all of our, all of our folks and make our schools super. So with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Anything else for the agenda for this evening? Any other citizen would like to address the board, not related to the budget, but any other general issue? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right.